Good evening, everyone. Let's power this as we go to the board. Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for our mayor Garza and our council that you have placed these leaders before us, Father, to make a difference in our community and the lives of the citizens in our community. We ask that tonight you give them the wisdom and the revelation that is needed to make decisions for this area. We thank you for them and we call them blessed. We thank you for this meeting and everything will go accordingly and, Father, that it will run until the timing that you've given us. We thank you again for the leaders in our community that you've placed them in our lives, Father, to help us be good, honest, abiding citizens. And we just ask all of this in your mighty name. Amen.
Okay, we have established a forum. Councilman Miller, Councilwoman Borones, Councilwoman Castillo, and Councilwoman Guerrero. Councilwoman Rodriguez is out. His wife delivered a baby boy this morning. Okay, well, everyone, please stand for the U.S. Pledge of Allegiance and the text.
I would like to testify, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
At this time, do we have any citizens' comments?
May I have a counsel? I'm very uncomfortable at present. At the last meeting, under new business, there was a portion there that says to approve nonstandard E.T.A. agreements regarding the code development of my 2567. Can you hear me? The presenter of this request was Chris Hug, who is attorney, if I'm saying correctly. He looks for our city attorney, if I understand, is that correct? Well, during his presentation, I was asking myself a question, why is Mr. Hug presenting this about taking water from the springs? And I was wondering, why isn't the developer or the attorney asking for this request of providing water out of the city land? And then during Mr. Hug's presentation, also, what went through my head is, well, at what cost will it speak to the city? And then one of the council members asked that question. And I believe it was Mr. Miller that said, it's not his exact words, but what is the downside of his proposal? And Mr. Hug says, none. And I was like, that can't be so. And then also, Mr. Miller, followed by what my question was, is, well, what about the cost of the project? Like, who fits the bill? And after that, it was tabled. And so I had a huge problem with Mr. Hug's not keeping the city of Forestville at his first interest. This is what he is paid for, if I'm understanding correctly. And he is paid by the taxpayers of Forestville. And then I noticed after his presentation that he walked out of the flipping study right there, it was the attorney for the developer, the developer himself. And it was as if he were working for the developer instead of for the welfare of Forestville. And so, being a citizen, I really don't appreciate the concept of interest that seemed to be going on with this presentation. And again, I am just a plain old citizen. I don't know the ins and outs. I don't know the legalities. I don't know if he was on mark of doing that. But it just seemed strange that it was presented by our person that should be, you know, our attorney that should be looking out after us. Because, you know, it's our water and sewage, and, you know, we're trying to get that all straightened out. I just want to bring that. Do you like?
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to go on to old business. One A. Open, sorry. Was there anybody else that had a citizen comment? One A is consideration and action to approve the minutes from January 29, 2013. If I can have a motion.
Before we get to a motion, I have a correction. In the new business item F, subitem number G, the minutes state manager's quarterly personal review to be done on the second council meeting in May or 2013 following financial reports review. It should read, done the second council meeting in May of 2013.
That correction will be made, Councilman.
With that correction, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 29.
Okay, may I have a second? Second motion by Councilwoman Miller, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four zero. Now, consideration and action to approve the minutes from February 14, 2013.
Again, Madam Mayor, I have a correction, I believe. Under new business item 3C, the second sentence says, Mr. Rosenberg responded regarding the question if the business property owners along the road had been contacted. I believe it was Mr. Hug who was present at that meeting, not Mr. Rosenberg.
Would that change where you make the motion?
Yeah, would that change to approve the minutes from February 14?
May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion. By Mr. Miller, second by Councilwoman Guerrero, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four zero. Now, consideration and action to approve the minutes from February 28 of 2013.
Madam Mayor, these are just typo corrections on their old business A. Instead of form that should be from, and on the second page, the very end, with no further business review determined 605, that should be deleted. And on the top, there are a list.
Also, in item 3C, I believe, or new business item C, motion was made by Councilwoman Guerrero, motion died due to lack of a second. It doesn't state what his motion was.
Could those change, please?
Well, I'd like to see the revised version of this with the motion on there, unless anybody can recall exactly what that motion was that died from lack of a second. So with that, I would move to table the approval of the minutes from February 28.
Okay, may I have a second? I thought you did. I'm going to have a motion to table the minutes for February 28 until corrections are done and explanation on item C.
Mr. Miller, just for the record, the motion that was made was Mr. Guerrero made the straight motion to let staff respond. And then you added a couple of things to that, so we let the motion die for Mr. Guerrero. And then you restated the motion to let staff respond with the additional information. I can retype that up and bring it back for the end of the meeting, or we can approve them at the next meeting.
I think it's just no sense running that approved. We can just approve them at the next meeting, if that's all right.
Very good.
Okay, I have a motion by, which motion?
The motion to table.
To table, and a second by Guerrero. Okay, Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero. Okay, consideration and action to approve the minutes from March 8, 2013.
I would move to approve the minutes from March 8, 2013.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion by Councilwoman Guerrero, a second by Councilwoman Miller, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, motion carries three zero. Three one. Now, we're going to go on to presentation, item two, the financial update, January 2013 detailed listing of charter accounts by Laura Vegas.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, citizens. This is a financial presentation for the January 2013 budget report. It included in your packet as well as detailed listing and the requested fund balance report as well. Excuse me, the general fund. As of January 31st, the general fund financing sources total of $1,267,499. This includes $316,260 for the M&amp;O portion of property tax. That's 82.77% collected as of January. We've mentioned it again, November is your highest month for collections. January, you brought in 10.56. Sales tax revenues for the month was $111,101, which is an increase compared to last year of $19,797, which is staying on, we're staying on target for about a 21% increase overall. So, which is really nice to see, and I think it's, from looking at it, is mostly due to new sales. We've got the Walmart plus all of the Eagle Ford sale, that is helping some, but it is due to your larger stores that have increased. Permit fees were up last month, excuse me, January and December due to Oak Hill's apartments pulling their permits. There was additional permits pulled for them in January as well at Holiday Inn. There will be a future offset when we get to the next section on budget, the budget amendment that will go out towards the inspection company that comes out and does the inspections. General fund expenditures at this point total $996,162, or 26.33%. And we're still relatively low on expenditures, because we're not spending unless it's absolutely necessary. Biweekly payroll, partway 35% will be expensed in all related line items, there have been nine pay periods out of '26. The, I'm just trying to kind of hit the highlights like I did in the memo. Said there's very little expenditure going on. Water sewer fund financing totals are $456,049. Of this, water residential and commercial is $278,974. It's still down about $18,000, which is, when I get to compare it from January to January last year, it's staying constant with the decrease that happened in October. That was again related to the drought of prior year. Residential and commercial revenues total 118, and are relatively equal from last year same period. Utility fund expenditures total $378,995, or 23.19% of the budget. The largest expenditure, again, we talked about this every month, hasn't really changed much right now. We have the permit fees that you paid to TCEQ, pay those in November and December. Chemicals, your sewer disposal fees, sludge, electric, and that's the largest line items. There was, and I mentioned this at the last report, it was going to hit in January, we had the number three pump station for the sewer plant, $24,763 repair. Unfortunately, that picks it, we don't want sewer going anywhere. So, debt service is the other side of your property tax. We are considered your INS or interest on sinking. Current and delinquent property tax is $358,914. Again, this includes $356,032 for the current, 82.77. Falls the same thing as general fund, you collect your largest portion in November. We make payments for debt service in February, so, in March. Excuse me, so there still is only, only payment coming out of the same one that happened back in November, $14,000. Those are your waters, major, your largest funds.
Is there any questions?
I have several. I think you probably did. I sent them to Andy before I, specifically as it relates to the detailed report. In January, you reflect the water penalty of, actually, I just typo in here, a little over 5% of what the total billing was, and then we see a sewer penalty that's also a little over 5%. And then we see a refuse penalty that's a little over 5%. I'm concerned that we have that much in penalties.
Okay, I'm not sure what, what you're comparing. I read the email, and I don't know what you're taking in, getting your 5%. Penalties are 20%, calculated 20% on the water sewer refuse on the 10th of the month. And when that process that the utility billing clerk goes through, she processes on the 10th, when people haven't paid, they go through and in the system process late notices, and the 20% is applied. That entry then enters onto the system through, and it hits a line item, and it's called penalties.
Well, my point was that we have that much in late water sewer and refuse, that it's 5% of the total?
Actually, it's 3.66 if you're adding two. I'm not sure if you were looking at one line or the two lines. There's water residential and commercial.
I was just looking at one, comparing it to one line, but whether it's 3% or 5%, the numbers seem very large. I'm concerned that we have that much in late bills, and I think that's a flag that maybe we need to be doing something different for that, so that we, granted, it's income to the city, but if we're, if the total refuse charge is X number of dollars, and 5% of that, or greater than 5% of that, is turning out to be penalty, that's a significant number, and I think maybe we need to address something procedure related to say, okay, how can we do things different to reduce that cost to the customer so that they're not paying the penalties?
We offer credit cards, online payments, we also don't serve out. That's, we actually, that's fairly low dollars, $2,000 on the water alone, only for the month of January, water penalty for the water force was $2,477. And sewer penalty was $1,180. That's a pretty low number for penalties. Again, those people still have till the end of the month before they're disconnected to pay. Refuses, I believe, was $2,703.
I think the numbers are a little bit more, and when I looked at, first page of this detail, it shows, under water penalty, that the billing for zone one was $48,948.49 on January 23rd.
And $19,507 for the commercial, those two together, need to be added together.
So the penalty is of both of those?
Yes, those are, it's just that the system breaks out residential and commercial.
But it doesn't break out the penalty?
No.
So maybe not 5%, but it's striking as a significant number. Thank you for answering that. A couple other questions. I see a income from River City Steel, my title is here, and recycling, for $1,183.60. It was just an unusual entry that I hadn't seen before that came under miscellaneous. What are we recycling?
We, if I can answer that, what happens is, any of the excess material that's left over in our city yard, what was being done prior is, they just leave it there in a pile or rust away. Our method of disposing of that is to send it off to this River City Steel, sell it, and then this portion comes back to the city. Laura has since created a specific line item for that, correct?
Yeah, they have done that in the past, it was under miscellaneous revenue, and so we have it under.
But it's just whatever excess pieces of pipe, any kind of iron that we've got, old water reeds and stuff, all of that, instead of piling it away and just growing grass around it, we're getting rid of it and giving the money back, and she deposited specifically.
So do we have, are we keeping, obviously, we're keeping track of our experience so that we can look to budget this as income next year, right?
Well, we can, we can look at what this past year has brought, but it all depends on what kind of work they're doing. If we do have a lot of construction and there is stuff being worked on, and we'll have access materials, so that will be something that, yeah, we can sure look at to see.
Because we budget revenues in very, very small amounts. I've seen line items, you know, for as little as $25 is budgeted income to the city. If we got $1,183 on this one time, well, we're probably talking a couple thousand dollars a year potentially, and that needs to be budgeted.
Okay.
Continuing with my questions from the detailed report, you list a payment of $47.89 to the Walmart community as a meeting expense.
Walmart community, Walmart credit card, we've briefly touched on that. That $47 was for.
Because it came under water sewer fund.
Yes, it was for the Hot Wells Wee. In December, we hosted the Hot Wells Meeting that the water and sewer guides attend under Texas Water Utilities Association. Hot Wells District is made up of Vaticosa, Bee, Golian, Karnes, and Wilson, and they take turns going around different places hosting. So that was for water and snacks, and the gentlemen that attend those meetings and all the different districts get credit for, towards their operator licenses. So it's actually, it's them having to go to classes all the time, this is a way that...
In addition to that, it's a good way for them to make the routes to our city instead of having our guys have to drive and fuel up.
There's several expenses listed under the animal control, under the water and sewer fund. I was kind of taken aback that animal control was under the water and sewer fund. Maybe we elaborate on that?
We, dual purpose employee that has been like that forever in a day of needle chapa is, is the Walmart operator's last animal control. That's where that...
So we're incurring vet fees as a result of animals?
Humanizing. They have to be euthanized after three days.
Now, since we're on that subject, how is it working with the rescue group that made a presentation to council about wanting to really improve that process for identifying dogs, and is that still ongoing?
It's pretty much come to a standstill at this point. I know that they were trying to reorganize their establishment and get something situated over there. We do work with them on occasion, and as much as positive, but it hasn't materialized as much as we would like.
We may want to re-energize them along with the police department and their efforts in licensing and possibly even some of the issues with the county that they're facing with animal control. And I think maybe we can share resources and potentially do a better job with that.
Yes, sir, I think it's a good point that you got, that the police department would like to take on the registration stuff, that we'd be utilizing to assist us in that. That's a good point.
Two other questions, as it relates to the detailed report. Under the contingency allocation, there was a $214 credit for heat safety equipment. And as I look through the budget amendment that we'll be getting to, let's see how this contingency allotment got used in a number of ways, I was just surprised that we were at this entry.
That was actually, it was a credit, as you noted in your email. It was incorrectly coded in November, and when I was working through Januaries, moved it to, because November was actually closed at this point, so we moved it to the appropriate line item, the testing. I'm not sure how it got incorrectly coded, it just did. That was back in November, again.
That's testing? Because it came across as a contingency allocation.
Again, originally in November, the invoice was posted to that contingency allocation line item. And so then the credit is it being moved from that line item, which that line item then became zero expenses.
Right, so it was a correction, correction. Then, there was a miscellaneous donate, I'm assuming that's a donation, of $250. It didn't say to whom or to what it was for.
The system doesn't print everything that was on the check in the way the report. It went to Lions Club, you'll see right below that was the actual incoming from Republic slash Allied Services. They gave us a donation for the Lions Club, for the annual meeting that was held for them, for the national. And so it was actually an in and out. They, part of, part of their contract is giving money back to the community, that was, so. And it was right directly below it, you'll see there was the 250 for the check, and then right below it was the 250 that went out of the public services.
Certainly, it is. Appreciate that. And then, the last one shows office supplies from Weston Services of $300. I didn't know Weston Services offered office supplies.
They do the, they get our I-bill seekers for city heat. This was a previous purchase that wasn't paid until that point in time, after the council said no more on any non-essential. So it was, this was...
Yeah, okay, thank you. And it's just questions that I had as we thumbed through this thing to truly understand it. And I, hopefully, maybe my email made it a little bit easier to answer the questions, but it's...
We appreciate that very much. It gave us time to work with Laura, and she's educating me at the same time.
Okay. In your cover on the January 2013 budget report, you make a statement that says, "In the general administration department, website technology line item is high due to the required posting of meetings." And I saw a number of payments in there. I'm concerned that we're having to pay every time we post something. Is that something that we can do internally to save that cost?
We, this was, this was an issue that we were trying to address some time back, and there is a method that we will approach the council for approval. David Bro, the handler of our website, did give us a proposal in the amount of, 3,200 to $3,840 for him to set up the creation of a password protected administration interface for you and your staff to use, that we can enter our own stuff instead of sending it in for him to enter. And I can get you a copy of this. Creation and normalization of my SQL databases for document information, upload file interface where date, title, type, and all we list may be specified. File conversion code to automatically convert from doc to docX files, to PDF files when necessary, supporting server side code installation and configuration, modification of existing meetings, notices and audience pages to read from new database upload structure, addition import of all existing manually created files into new database upload structure and testing of new structure system. Stating that it takes about 20, it will take him 20 to 24 hours to perform that, that it would be able, it would give our city secretary access to be able to post anything on our website, right?
Yeah, I think what they're talking about is called content management. Yeah, I think what they're talking about is called content management. And in my business, we manage a number of websites and design a number of websites. Content management doesn't necessarily require an SQL database. I'm a little concerned about the costs of doing that. But that's certainly something that we would have to look at. There's nothing on the city's webpage that I, that needs dynamic data control on it.
Well, I'd like to visit with you, maybe share a night and sit and go over this proposal and see what, get some feedback from you on what we need to do to be able to give her access to post all that on her own.
And, thank you, Andrew. Lastly, Laura, in my email, and I'm certain that this is just an issue of a number of corrected entries. But when tracking particularly the tax revenue in the general fund, there's some deltas that I can't explain. And I don't want you to explain them to me here in this meeting. You know, I'm sure it could be something as simple as an entry got moved from one account to another account that makes up for those numbers, but, so that I can track it and understand it. Because I'm tracking with you a hundred percent on expenses and every other department through this thing, even with the budget amendments, we'll be able to track that. But I'm not lining up on the tax revenue and I'm sure it's just some minor adjustments. But at your convenience, if you could email me those, those numbers, and we're not off by a huge amount. I think we're sixteen thousand dollars over one point two million, so.
Yeah, let me, it's really easy because some people kind of understand some changes that are occurring since I'm here, now that I'm here. Actually, what, in December, I ran the reports for October on December twelfth. And then on December fourteenth, we were still working at year end and the new months and we were still making changes. And actually, I was done and closed the month and there was several things that came up, one of which was hotel motel tax. And it got booked after. I didn't catch it or I would have fixed it with my report that went into the packet. It's actually a learning lesson for them because then they also had something come back with water and Encode said, "Well, you've got to fix that in November." Well, she's got November closed, you can't do it. Well, no longer, once a month is completed and the month end process is done, which is reconciling bank statements, preparing month reports, the month is closed, no entries can be made in anymore. So that actually in December, it actually had three different times for three different things, one of which didn't affect October. But they would email us and out to the girl in front of how to handle that if you're making corrections, they get made on the day you're correcting it, not on biggest months. It's just been, just how they have done things. It does make it very difficult to keep track.
So, so the change, the deltas are in October's report?
Yes, it was only in October and it was for hotel motel tax and, and rent. So they came in the very first of October and due to year end, it's not.
If you could send me those corrections, I would appreciate it.
From now, what we do is close the month and.
Policies and procedures that we're working on and that's one of the things that Riley stated. Don't go back and change things after they're closed because this is what exactly this happened before. So she's educating them, say, "We post the books, something else comes in, we're gonna, we're gonna book it the day that you find it or the day it comes in." That way we don't have, you know, this coming back. So thank you for that because that was an education with me too. And I think you say that the Encode, they told them that this is how they were supposed to do it.
Yeah.
To go back after the books.
They were like, "Oh, but Encode," and I said, "Well, I understand it goes on process, but it is an accounting on a term, I can't.
That one called us for a little bit once he sent that email to me. What's he talking about? It took us a little bit.
It was so close to that date, I didn't even realize I had the two days across and didn't catch it in report.
And she, that's when she explained to me, showed me copies of emails that she sent to the lady, no more.
Thank you. And I knew it was something simple seemingly, but if you could, again, just send me those corrected numbers so that I can, my numbers start to match your numbers?
Yeah.
Was it under presentation portion of that?
Okay, now we're gonna go on to three A, consideration and action to approve ordinance amending twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget. Laura.
In your packet, yes, I'm attached to the top of reports that came out of Encode for the changes in the budget, the budget amendment. Budget amendment, it only is affecting the general fund, utility fund, debt service fund. Hotel motel is a new fund. This budget amendment is creating that fund. And four A Corporation adopted their budget in February. And so that is also bringing that into our budget because four A has their budget that they approved and then it, council has to approve it as well. Four A and four B are both done that way. And they had not had a meeting, as we all know, for almost a year or so. Excuse me. I'm gonna start with the general fund. The general fund changes to the overall budget are a decrease of nineteen thousand seventy-two. The original budget has a forty-five thousand dollar revenues over expected expenditure. So the effect of the changes in the end is only twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. Most of the changes are just housekeeping in nature, trying to set up new lines that are more appropriately tracked. But there are, there were several that are, that are not. The very first line that is affected is your added alarm tax or your M and O maintenance operation. When council approved the budget in September, the budget included the current rate. And the council then, and the next, next item adopted the effective rate. That in turn had to be shifted, the amounts had to be shifted between the M and O and the INS. So the ninety-eight, excuse me, ninety-eight, ninety-five percent collection rate, the changes decrease on the general fund of forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-two. The hotel motel tax is included in your general fund right now and which actually when we go make this budget amendment, we will make some changes to that line item so that we'll have to show that because it will throw your, your numbers off again. Hotel motel tax has been reported in the general fund as a line item, as a tax line item. It really should be a transfer in, should be set in its own set of books, so it's going to be in its own set of books. So the line item for tax is actually being decreased from three hundred thousand, but there is a transfer in, still in revenues for three hundred, so the fact is we are. But we will be, again, we're creating the hotel motel fund. Musical court fines is another housekeeping issue. The state fees that are collected in the court should be going to your balance sheet. They are not your fees. They have always been reported as revenue in city, going back looking at your financial statements. Those are not your revenue. State requires you to collect those fees, it's, it's the state fees. Then they have not, they've been expensing the fees to the state. That's not normal in any, any city. It's just not even a problem. So we have reduced court fines by the amount that was also the expenditure of fifty-three thousand, so they will be, so the effect again is zero. It's just a housekeeping issue. License permits, that line item is where you collect building permits for hotels and houses, all the different types of permits. We have increased that seventy thousand because as of this, as of January, we have collected seventy thousand more than was budgeted. Again, a portion of this has been offset within the budget amendment. We offset, let me somebody in the first today, I was on the monitor. Where did we put?
Yeah, the license permit, line item increased by seventy thousand to the old bill.
Yeah, there it is.
The line item, concrete building inspection services, and the general administration department was increased by forty thousand, a portion of the payback for the recording and personnel.
Which we kind of mentioned in the budget report. Again, there's a few, in, there's another civic center rental and ticket sales that's in and out in revenues, just to account for in a proper line item. That's on your revenue side. The overall change in revenues is actually a decrease of thirty-one thousand and seventy-two dollars. Again, that's from the property tax decrease and the increase in permits. That's just a change in revenue. On the expenditure side, we, there's a lot, a lot of different changes and I'm not gonna go through all of them for everybody here. Once we, once this ordinance, so it was kind of clear, once ordinance is adopted with this amendment, we will change what's on the website. So you'll actually be able to go see it on the website. Some of the larger ones, we did, when we mentioned this also, when I would give the presentation last month, some line items that have been, they've been, the expenses have been moved to another line item, such as HSA. We have a health savings account, or HRH, the health reimbursement account. That was included in employee insurance, which is different than the employee's insurance. So we moved it to another line. So that, we took eleven thousand from the employee insurance line because Tom had included it during the budget process and moved it down to a line item called health reimbursement or anything. Again, office supplies. Some of this again is the learning, new way of looking at books and everybody's learning so it comes from the water department to the water guys in the field, to the street. Office supplies, we did move five thousand five hundred from that line to office machinery equipment, which is, office supplies in my mind are paper pens and pencils. We had to buy a catheter to be, because I didn't have catheter. That's office machinery, which is an office supply. So that type of learning. Again, we've already talked about building inspections, that was increased. Liability insurance, we had with our TML, that's for our property, workers' comp, vehicles. It's been the past split between several departments. The liability insurance bill does not really come that way. It was, it was just how they had done it and they just stayed with the same percentages. So right now, we have combined it all, I mean, from the street department, pulling from the police, pulling from parks, and put it all in one line item under the general administration budget. When we go through the budget process, we'll actually be splitting out even further for workers' comp. Currently, you do not utilize the workers' comp portion in your payroll module. It'll allow it to calculate workers' comp expense when it calculates payroll. Right now, they come out and do a work, what they call workers' comp audit in October, happens every year in every city. And they look at your payroll and they determine how much you should have paid in workers' comp. So then they send you the bill, or not, I believe they already sent you the bill, then they do an adjustment on what you pay. Well, with the payroll module, we won't have to worry about that adjustment and we'll actually be able to expense it because it's based on salary. And it's based on a rate for police, streets, office workers, they all have a different rate and it's based on what you pay, what your salaries are. So that'll be something during budget amendment. But right now, we have moved it all under, again, general administration department that was in the general fund. So that line item increased fifty-six thousand, but it was moved from. Hotel motel, we mentioned that one. Again, we re, re moved it from revenues as a tax down to a transfer in. Expense side as well, the expense is going to be in civic center because that's what the expenses are for. So it's over now under, instead of general administration, it's over in the civic center department. Still in the general fund. And you're thinking.
I have several questions. Go ahead, please, Laura.
And I think most of these are, we talked about liability insurance, we talked about. Oh, and I do, on the fire department, currently when they pay, send us, we, we pay for some of their expenses, they pay them themselves and they send us a bill in a sense. We've been expensing that, there was office supplies, vehicle fuel, vehicle maintenance. They give us a breakdown and then we were coding that in that department. That's really not our true expenses. So I have moved that down to one line item called volunteer fire department contract. And so that we, it's really a payment to them because they're, they are volunteer fire department.
Same thing as EMS.
Yes, exactly. Because when we report our financial statements, it actually goes through to a, in a certain place, fines, salaries, and.
I think EMS is already that way, isn't it?
Yes. The fire department wasn't. And they're still gonna continue to give us their breakdowns. We know we're keeping the money for, but we just won't report it in here. We'll have an extra sheet for them. And liability insurance, that's really the, just the main, main entry. So questions on the general fund?
A couple, Laura. We talked about the fire department. When we changed the numbers around and combined them, we're reducing that expense by seventy-five hundred dollars.
Again, that's the TML liability insurance, it's over the general fund.
Okay, so we're taking, we, they did not have a liability line item, we moved, okay, so that's, that seventy-five hundred dollars is for the liability.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw that you took four thousand dollars of election expense and added a line called codification services. Could you elaborate on that?
That is the, for ordinances, when you, the book that was done, I believe, last time it was, I believe it was oh-nine, is that correct? There was, you have to do updates, you have to send in your ordinances and they, they put them in the book and update the book. We recently sent some and there was some invoices. So we're also gonna, we know we're gonna have a few more expenses, so we didn't have to spend thirty thousand on elections, so I did move it four thousand from the election line item.
Okay.
But it is something we need to consider future budget wise because it is going to be expensive every year.
But is it appropriate to be under mayor and council?
Or ordinances, we can.
Yeah, wouldn't that be probably more general administration versus mayor and council?
Either way.
Yeah, it happens either way. The, the way that we saw is a mayor and council are the ones that.
Seen it at city secretary.
Early ordinances, so we took it to say that it's your authority and your expense.
Like I said, I've seen where they actually, city secretary has its own department and it was in their budget. We don't have that budget, so whatever you'd like. But we just need to keep a line item for it. We need to not forget that is an expense every year. It will be forthcoming more often.
Now, lastly, actually my second to the last, you know, they're both related. And I got a little bit of history, if you will, humor me. At one point, the city was averaging about eighty thousand dollars a year in hotel motel tax. And this was as recent as three or four years ago. And of that eighty thousand dollars, fifty thousand or so, I forget the exact number, was given to the chamber of commerce for the operation of the visitor and tour center. And then a few years back, as we began the operation of the event center, the council at the time then voted to stop giving the chamber that money and give the eighty thousand or at the time it was about eighty thousand dollars for the operation of the event center. Now we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars a year in hotel motel tax. And in this budget amendment, we're taking two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars of it, more or less, of that hotel motel tax and using it in the general fund for the operation of the event center. That's how this expense line comes across, okay? I don't think that was the intention of the council. Now, as we move forward, and I don't recall, and I wasn't part of the original budget approval for, for this year, if they had planned to use all of that money for the operation of the event center. As we listen to the news today, or yesterday, in a recent, recently completed UTSA study of the Eagle Ford, it is the world's largest economic impact as it relates to oil. And I believe that the heads-to-beds piece of the hotel motel tax needs to be utilized in a number of ways to bring people to our community and advertise our community. And our greatest resource that we have as a city council is our chamber of commerce and our visitors and tour center. And I am absolutely uncomfortable dedicating all of the hotel motel. And I am absolutely uncomfortable dedicating all of the hotel motel tax under the event center in, in a budget amendment. You know, the rest of the stuff, Laura, looks good, it, it makes a tremendous amount of sense, it's been well explained, you helped me fix my typographical errors in, in trying to understand this. But that one piece, I am very uncomfortable with, because I think we're tying our hands to the event center. We know we have costs in the operation of the event center, and we know we're working with that board to, to do things. And as we see their, their, their numbers are, are increasing in, in events, and they just recently, I'm told, revamped their fee structure, and we'll be bringing that to the council at the next meeting when the boards do their reports. But I'm uncomfortable with that piece right there in this budget amendment, particularly when, I don't understand this, and Laura, I'm sorry, I'm going to come back, I'm going to ask you about this. When it came to the fund balances, you show the component fund, the 4A, being six-point-eight million dollars in the red. Is that because their debt hadn't been separated out?
That's because they are not a, they are not a, the same type of fund as a general fund, so they're, they are like, run like a business, and they have debt.